Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. My name is Jay Minkara, ZBA Chair. Directly to my right is Josh Neely, Vice Chair. Following that, JP Boucher, Member. And then going across the stage, Steve Lionel, Member, and Joseph Patry, Alternate. So we have four full members with us this evening, and so for that reason, Mr. Patry will be, unless he needs to recuse himself for some reason, will be voting on all of the cases. So just in terms of the order of business and kind of how we operate here, so this evening, all of our applications are for variances. So a variance is a request to deviate from the terms of zoning ordinance. And so in order for us to grant a variance, the zoning board has to find in favor of five criteria. We have to find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, that it would be within the spirit of the ordinance, that granting the variance, by granting the variance, substantial justice would be done, that there'd be no diminution to surrounding property values, and that owing to some special condition of the property, denying the variance would result in an undue hardship to the applicant seeking it. So that's the criteria that we go by. In terms of the order of business, I'll read each case into the record, and then we will invite the applicants to come up to the podium. We will ask you to state your name and your address for the record, and then each applicant has up to 15 minutes to present his or her case. You don't have to take the 15 minutes if you don't want to, but you have up to 15 minutes. After the close of that, of course, the board may ask questions during that time period. Afterwards, we will ask anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application to come forward, and anyone who wishes to speak in favor will have five minutes to do so. And again, we'll ask you to come up to the podium. After that, we will ask if there's anybody who has any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application, and they will also have up to five minutes each to address the board. Following that, we will offer the applicant the opportunity for a rebuttal, and the applicant will be able to come forward if the applicant wishes to rebut any comments, and we'll have up to five minutes to do that. Following that, if there was anybody in opposition or with questions or concerns, we will allow one person to come forward and have the last word. So sometimes that happens, sometimes that doesn't. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Fock, I should have introduced Carter Fock, Deputy Planning Manager, to my left. Mr. Fock, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
No, there are none.
All right, so with that, then, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Patry.
Present.
And I, Jay Minkara, of course, am present. So the first application is for...
I saw somebody raise their hand.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Hang on. Does procedures, does that allow anybody to get to speak at home's content? Does anybody get to?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So the first case is Area Agency Properties, Inc., the owner, Gateways Community Services, the applicant, 140 to 148 Canal Street, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7. To exceed the maximum number of ground signs per premise, one permitted, one existing, one additional ground sign requested, and two, to encroach eight feet into the 10-foot required setback. Both requests to install a second ground sign. This is in the GI TOD overlay zone in Ward 3. Is there somebody representing the applicant? Please come forward.
Hello. My name's Carolyn McGlaughlin, and I'm here representing Gateways Community Services at 144 Canal Street. I will not take my 15 minutes. I just wanted to respectfully request approval for the second sign on our property. We experience new clients visiting our property every single day. Our property is located along a busy road with no turning lane, which means drivers must take, make two very quick decisions. First, they must identify the location, and second, they must navigate to the correct one-way entrance. This can be confusing and even dangerous, especially for those unfamiliar with the area. An additional sign would serve as a critical purpose. It would improve visibility and wayfinding, helping drivers recognize our location sooner and making a more confident decision. We're committed to being a good neighbor and maintaining the aesthetic integrity of the community. The proposed sign would be professionally designed to complement the existing signage and surroundings. Thank you for the consideration.
Absolutely. Any questions from the board? If not, unless you have something to add, you're free to take a seat.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board. Mr. Neely.
So I'm in favor of this application. I do believe that adding this sign will increase the safety in this area. Ironically, I was on Canal Street today in that same area. Folks are speeding through there, a significant amount of traffic is speeding through there. I do believe that second sign mounted into the ground will definitely help folks see way in advance when they need to turn. It is, you know, right before the lights. We really don't want to see people doing U-turns in that area because it does get kind of tight. And that building's also in a U-shape, and I believe their current sign is kind of set back, so if somebody's coming from this area not using a GPS, it is easy to miss, and we're going to get a lot of U-turns there. So I am fully in favor of this application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Lionel.
I'm also in favor, pretty much the reasons stated already.
Mr. Patry.
Yeah, I found the building hard to find even with my GPS, so I think the second sign's a great idea. Very difficult to find, actually.
Yeah, I have to agree. I drive by there all the time, and but for my affiliation with another organization, I had no idea it was there. And I've just, I've been driving by for years, so yeah, I think it's definitely needed. I also didn't know where the driveway entrance was, so I think it's clearly needed for safety reasons as well.
Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Patry.
Sure. I move that we approve the request for, let me get my iPad. For Area Agency Properties, Gateway Community Services, to grant a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 107, to exceed the maximum number of ground signs permitted, permitted one existing and one additional sign to be proposed, and that will encroach eight feet into the 10-foot required setback, both to allow the 10-foot ground sign. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the additional sign would increase public safety in the neighborhood, given that it is a busy street and with a lot of traffic. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the additional sign would again increase public safety and make the building easier to identify. We find that granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow the public to more easily find this building. We have no testimony that the values of the surrounding properties would be impacted either way, and we find that there is unnecessary hardship owing to the special conditions of the property because of its location on this very busy street and difficult spot where it's located in the street. And there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision here because, again, of the busyness of the street, the location of the property, and the difficulty in locating the building. And we find that the proposed use is reasonable because it is a reasonable-sized sign that will increase public safety. So for those reasons, I move we grant the variance.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? All those in favor? Your application is passed. Just be aware that there is a 30-day window of appeal, so you can proceed. It would be at your own risk, probably not very likely since there was no opposition, but just be mindful of that.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next application is the application of Scott and Pamela Goodwin at 85 Hills Ferry Road, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 for maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 22 feet existing, an additional 12-by-41 driveway expansion proposed on the left side of the driveway for a total width of 34 feet. That's in the RA zone in Ward 3. And you must be the applicant.
I have some visual aids.
Sure.
Now, I don't have enough for everybody because I don't realize the board is going to be somebody.
We'll share.
I'll let you have it.
How many did you bring?
Six.
That's enough. Perfect. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Sure. Name is Scott Goodwin.
Yes.
80.
You can move it, and if it's easier, you can also take it off.
All right, that's okay. Yep. 85 Hills Ferry Road, and again, I'm requesting a variance for a driveway expansion. So again, the purpose of this is really to improve the vehicle safety, you know, provide off-street parking, and really reduce street congestion, and then add additional parking space for my family. The other part of this is we have extended family that's going to be moving in, so we're going to have more cars on this, on this street. So again, it will be an asphalt driveway, so I laid out the site plan that's listed here. So again, you already articulated the driveway width. It doesn't actually change the variance size of the driveway width on the main street. It just increases the width of it to the side of the house. Going on to the next slide, which actually shows our current home and the parking. You can see there are two cars that are there, and actually adding two additional usually actually extends out into the street, and Hills Ferry is a pretty busy road during the day. So and then just another house that's in the neighborhood, just a depiction of what the driveway would look like afterwards. That shows that this was already granted to somebody else as a precedence, so. And then if I move on, some other driveways where people are parking alongside of it, which again, I really would like to, you know, kind of maintain the look of the property and again, make sure that it doesn't depreciate any of the home values in the neighborhood. And then again, compliance and community impact, which is, again, there's no encroachment on the right-of-ways sidewalks or easements, no additional impact on neighboring properties, sightlines and visibilities, you know, pedestrians and vehicles remain clear. Drainage and proper grading will be, you know, kind of set up properly to be avoided, and again, I don't feel will decrease the property values in any way.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, last one's just the benefits of it, right, which is, again, improved safety entering and exiting the property, reduce the need for on-street parking, improve neighborhood traffic flow, and then enhance property's functionality with minimal visual change. That's it.
That's it. Questions from the board? Mr. Lionel.
If I recall correctly, and this is in my neighborhood, your lot was split off from another lot, and the house was built fairly recently. Is that true, or maybe I'm confusing?
Yeah, it was built in the, it wasn't too recently, I'm pretty sure. When was it? 2003. So it's been there for a while.
Okay, so that's a different lot than I'm picking up. Okay, so you have a two-car garage. Do you park in the garage?
Partially, but I have a trailer that I'd also like to put there, which I don't at this time because, again, I don't want to, you know, kind of really just looking bad.
And I'll just comment that people pave the driveways on the side of their house without applying the permit, unfortunately, too often. So it's not necessarily that we granted something. I don't know the particular house that you're referring to because when I drove by, I didn't, I didn't spot any, I wasn't aware of anybody that did that sort of thing, but I'm sure, I know it does happen. So you have, you're going to have two more people moving into your house, did you say?
Yes.
And each of them has a car?
Yes.
I see. So you still won't have enough space for everybody?
There'll be enough space, but it's going to be probably extending into the driveway by this time. Right now, we have three, and oftentimes, the car is probably put out into this street.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have one. In your diagram, you show 37 feet back from the garage to the street. Were you, is that from the front property line or from the edge of pavement?
No, that's just to the edge of where we start the new driveway, so it's 10 feet from the actual edge of the, sorry, edge of the street. Yeah, so total of, sorry, let me look at this. Yeah, so it's a total of 27 feet to the street.
Right, I guess my question is that were you measuring from the edge of pavement or to your front property line?
The edge of the pavement.
Okay, that's what I thought, because I was going to say, just when I went by, it didn't look like you had that much space, but, okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so.
Very good. You're free to take a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Boucher.
I think it's a reasonable request. The additional parking is reasonable. As you noted, it's not a very shallow driveway, but it's still, like the applicant mentioned, I'm sure that if you have two vehicles that are not small, you're sticking out a little street or you're right on the edge of the street. So to achieve some extra parking on the side of the garage, you have to get there somehow. So obviously, they had a choice of doing the turn-in, or, you know, they could have applied to widen the driveway over the street. I think this, I think, is less intrusive and achieves, gives the applicant the ability to still use some property on the side of his garage for parking. So I'm going to support the application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I'm really kind of on the fence about this one. It's a narrow lot, and this driveway would be right up against the neighbors' lot. I'm not aware, and I go up and down Hills Ferry Road all the time. I'm not aware of other houses in that immediate neighborhood that have an additional paved side driveway like that. So I'm kind of on the fence about it.
Yeah, I would agree. I am also. Where I'm struggling is really what distinguishes this property from any other, because it seems that it really is very similar to the other homes in the neighborhood all around it. So that's kind of where I struggle. On the other hand, I would note the intrusion is relatively minor in that it's not widening up the street, it's the flare that really is. But I'd be interested in hearing anybody else's thoughts, particularly on that question of what are the special conditions?
Mr. Neely.
So those are great points, but I am in favor of this application. When I look at this property, it really sits towards the front of the lot, although, you know, the lot's not, not big. We did hear from the applicant that if they tried to park back-to-back, they've got one car sticking into the road. They have told us that they use at least half the garage. So all the questions that we always ask folks, like, are you using the garage? Have you thought of any other options? I don't see any other options. I know we've had folks come before us on the board before, and we've kind of tried to push them in this direction and said, you know, did you think about wrapping it around? And the other really interesting thing is we're not doing a bigger curb cut here. So really, this is just about the wrap around the house. So DPW is not going to be coming out there. It's not going to look like a parking lot in the front yard here. We also had the folks say they've got some more folks moving into the house with two more people. The people in the cars are coming, so they're either going to park on the road, or they're going to figure out a way to get this done. I think this is the way to get it done. So for those reasons, I am in favor of this.
Mr. Patry.
I tend to agree with Mr. Neely, Mr. Boucher, basically the same reasons, so I'm in favor.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Scott D. and Pamela J. Goodwin, owners, 85 Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 56, Lot 19, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, subsection E, subsection 1, for maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 22 feet existing, an additional 12-foot by 41-foot driveway expansion proposed on the left side of the driveway for a total width of 34 feet. This is located in the RA zone in Ward 3. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the way this house is located on the lot, they only have an ability to park two cars in their driveway without extra cars sticking into the road. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Once again, this is a safety issue. They did testify that when they have three cars, one of them is sticking into the road. So from a big-picture perspective, this is going to improve safety on Hills Ferry Road, which we heard does have quite a bit of traffic during certain times of the day. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that the applicant did testify. They looked at several other options. There really is no other option. They've got some folks moving into this house as well for a total of five cars. They are partially using their garage, and so they really have no place to park this. And I think that this was a good solution for how to move forward with their needs as well as not doing additional curb cut. We did not have any information about the values of the surrounding property being affected. And the unnecessary hardship portion is that the way that this house sits in the lot, which is not a large lot, the house sits towards the front of the lot, it is only a two-car garage, they cannot get a third car in there. This family is growing, and they do have a need for excess vehicles, and we did not have any testimony from the neighbor to that side of the house that they would be negatively affected. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Through a second. Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Discussion. All those in favor?
So it passes 3 to 2, so there you are. Your variance application has passed. Just be mindful, we, as I noted to the prior applicant, that there is a 30-day window of appeal period. You are free, however, to proceed.
Next case is the application of Aravella Veras and Kevin Morales of 33 Harvard Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 10 feet existing, an additional 19 feet requested for a total width of 29 feet. That's in the RC zone, Ward 7. And I assume you are the applicant's? If you would mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Yes.
She's the applicant, I'm an interpreter.
Ah, very good.
Aravella Veras, 33 Harvard Street. Not sure, I'm unsure.
Very good. And sir?
I'm the interpreter, Jose Santana.
Very good. Okay, so feel free to present your case. Describe to us what you're trying to do and why.
Okay. I have to speak in Spanish, and he's translating.
That's fine, absolutely.
I never speak English.
Don't worry.
I used to.
That's totally fine.
Okay. Okay. Yo soy Aravella Vera.
I'm Aravella Vera.
Soy nueva en esto porque es mi primera casa que compro.
I'm new at this because this is my first house that I purchased.
Mi familia ha crecido, y cuando yo parqueo y salgo, no me siento segura.
My family have grown, and when I am parking and trying to get out, I don't feel safe.
Porque la parte es muy alta, y mi carro siempre baja.
Because the curb is too high, and my car is kind of dropping down there.
Yo fui a la salida cinco para que me extendieran el driveway, pero vi que no era suficiente, por eso yo estoy acá.
I went to exit 5, then to extend my driveway, but I found out that it was not sufficient, and that's why I'm here.
So anything else you'd like to add?
No.
All right. Questions from the board? Mr. Lionel.
It looks to me that, in fact, this driveway was already extended.
Did you say extended?
Well, it's the full width of the property and is marked as if it were apartments with 33A, 33B, et cetera.
Sí.
So it, I don't understand the application saying that something that you will not do because it looks like it was already done.
Yo no estoy diciendo que se agrande el espacio. Yo estoy hablando de la parte donde baja el carro.
I am not asking for the driveway to be expanded. I am talking about the part where the car drops onto the street.
That's called the curb cut, and that's not something that we do here. Is that right, Mr. Fock?
No, we do the entire width of the driveway from the, well, it's going to start on the pavement, on the street right-of-way pavement, and it's going to go across the property line into their property. So, I mean, we don't issue curb cut or curb opening permits in our department, but we do look at the entire driveway.
Okay. So if I understand the situation correctly, the applicant's residence already has that full 29 feet of driveway, but the curb cut is only part of it. Is that, is that correct?
No sé el espacio que tenga acá, pero yo estoy hablando del espacio. La señorita de la salida cinco fue y midió, por eso yo estoy aquí porque...
I'm not talking about the space that I have as a width, but the lady from exit 5 went and measured towards the outside.
Yeah, I'm talking about outside, where my cargo is.
Yes, you're talking about, you, so what you would like is you'd like the, what we call the curb cut, where the driveway slopes down and meets the road, meets the street to be extended.
Right, right.
Dígale a él que también cuando compré mi casa, la parte que supuestamente, le estoy diciendo esto porque no sé que le pertenece a la ciudad, he tratado que me la arregle.
When I moved my house, the part that belongs to the city, I have tried for them to fix it.
Que yo lo podría arreglar si hay algún problema.
I could do it myself if there was a problem with that.
Pero eso es muy peligroso para la ciudadanía.
That's dangerous for the citizenship.
Yeah.
So basically, it's paved. It's a parking area, but they don't have an actual driveway of that width, so they're going over the curb.
Yeah, okay, I understand that is, that's not what the application says.
Porque yo no sabía que eso se llamaba diferente a eso. Dile.
I didn't know what was the right term for what I'm asking. Maybe that's why the confusion is.
Follow-up, Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Boucher.
So just to clarify, so basically, this is a, kind of like an after-the-fact, just to memorialize the 29 feet, and then with that, they can, if it were to pass, they could go get their curb cut from the city. So basically, this is just, again, an after-the-fact response to them trying to get the city to remove the curb. Correct?
Right.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
So will you just confirm for me that this is a duplex in both units? Both, each unit has three bedrooms, right?
usted me puede confirmar que es un duplex donde cada unidad tiene tres habitaciones?
Okay.
Sí.
And how many cars are parking there every day?
Hago como siete.
Seven, six or seven.
Six or seven?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, one more question?
Yes.
So with the current driveway you have, the original driveway, which goes down the side of the house, do you have four cars?
One side, the three of them, then there's one, and then on the other side, then two vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, you're free to take a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Boucher.
So, again, you know, it's clear that the driveway was there before. It's being, I drove by two times, one at night, one during the day, just to get a feel. And so it's definitely being used, and there's a need for it. As you look at properties surrounding this home, you soon realize that it's a tight neighborhood. I mean, lots are small. There is a lot of multifamily-type living that requires, you know, the parking. So, and there are other properties that I think more, they have more going on on their property than this property. There is property in the next door, or two houses down there. It's like a shared driveway, but it's spilling over to the other, to the back of the home. So there is absolutely a need for parking in this neighborhood. So when we look at the ordinance, I think that, in this case, I think it's needed. I think it looks, it may seem like a bigger ask, but it's, to me, the five feet is a small ask for the need that's in this neighborhood. And I think it's character of the neighborhood. I'm beginning to say it's not something that's going to stick out in the neighborhood because there are other properties that have more going on on the property from the parking perspective. I think it's obviously, you know, as she says, a safety issue. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Neely.
This case reminds me of one we had about two months ago for one of the local neighborhoods here, where they came to us and said, hey, we have two, you know, two or three units here. They'll have three bedrooms. And that was kind of an eye-opener to us because there's not many facilities around here that offer three bedrooms. We did grant them that access because they were shuffling and, once again, going over curbs, you know, something they've been doing for years, but they asked for a safety issue to get their cars off the street, which is really the reason I asked the question here was, you know, how many bedrooms in each? And the fact that we have six or seven cars, that's a lot. You know, when I look at this lot, it's surrounded by longer, thinner lots. This one looks like it was cut in half, half being Seven Arlington, this one being Thirty-Three Harvard. They really have no place to go. You look at some of these other, some of these other facilities, and folks can go right up the side of the building. They've got big backyards. People are parking back there. And, you know, as Mr. Boucher noted, there's a lot busier houses in that area. I am in favor. Anything to keep cars off the road here? And it's realistic. You know, you're talking about six bedrooms. It's realistic to think there's going to be six cars, and they've got to be able to fit the six cars. I think if we grant the relief here, they'll be able to do so. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Leno?
I really don't have a problem with the width of the driveway and the way it's being used. It's fairly typical for this type of multifamily unit. I think the thing that bothered me initially was seeing that it was, the driveway itself was already widened, so I wasn't sure what was being applied for where the application said that I will extend the driveway. But what they're looking essentially for is after-the-fact approval, and then that would enable them to get the curb cut. And, okay, as far as I'm concerned, that's all right.
Any other thoughts?
I'd just add, I do support the application, and I agree with Mr. Boucher. I think if you look around the neighborhood, I mean, people are wagering cars wherever they can, basically, including right next door. You see them kind of on both sides of the house. So it is challenging, just given the size of the property, how far back it is from the street, and the number of units.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Aravella Veras and Calvin Morales, owners of Thirty-Three Harvard Street. Sheet Twenty-seven Lot Two requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section E, subsection one, to exceed maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, ten feet existing, an additional nineteen feet requested for a total of width of twenty-nine feet. It's in the RC zone, Ward Seven. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, again, because it would allow the homeowner to use the currently paved driveway as it has been being used, and that it is within the character of the neighborhood. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Again, the request is for an extra five feet, but again, they feel that that is a reasonable request and that, again, the spirit of ordinance is being observed. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, again, because it allows the homeowner of this home, which is a, call it a two-family or duplex of two-family, the ability to have the occupants of that home be able to park on the property and get vehicles off the street. We find that we, there is no, there was no testimony for or against values surrounding properties, so we don't have any comment or position on that. As far as the unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties, again, I feel that, that the home is, there's a, the home is similar in some respects to other homes in the neighborhood, but the property size is consistent with some and not with others. But again, we have noted that this neighborhood, there's a lot of parking that's needed off street. And we find, again, we find that the use is reasonable one because, again, it allows the homeowners to be able to park the cars off the street. So with that, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Potry. Any discussion? All those in favor? Your variance request passes, and just as I noted before, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, so just be mindful of that. But you're free to proceed. So the next application is the application of Pope Family Trust, Jeffrey and Laura Pope, trustees, at Two Eighteen Manchester Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed the maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-seven percent requested, to construct a thirty-by-forty detached garage. It's in the R-eighteen zone in Ward Two, and you must be the applicant.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Pope. I live at Two Eighteen Manchester Street here in Nashua. And I've submitted a request for a variance to construct a thirty-by-forty garage detached from the dwelling to basically house our vehicles. I have two children. I have a travel trailer that I like to put in it to protect the, our assets from the harsh winter and the seasonal rains. The proposed garage meets all five variance criteria. It's a reasonable residential accessory use consistent with neighborhood character and offers no measurable harm to the public or butters. And I respectfully request that the board grant the variance. Thank you.
Any questions from the board before you sit down? Sir? Before you sit down, there might be questions from the board. Mr. Neely.
So I noted, your application talks about a garage, but all the drawings say barn. Big, big difference in my mind. I know you said you wanted to put a couple of cars in there. This is a large building you're asking for. Twelve hundred square feet. It's tall. This looks a lot bigger than any garage that I think we've seen come across here in years. Is it a barn? Is it a garage? What's really going on inside this building that needs to be such a large footprint?
Sure.
Because that's more than enough to fit your trailer, your car, and whatever. I mean, this is a large footprint. Just talk me through that, please.
Absolutely. So, yeah, it's, I guess the word barn is more of a character of the garage. It is a garage. It doesn't have any storage above it. It's a tandem garage, so we can fit realistically four cars. There's two bays. We can fit four cars in the garage, two in each bay. The right bay will be dedicated to the travel trailer that we have, and that will take up the entire, it's thirty-five feet long. So that side of the garage will house the travel trailer, and then the two, the adjacent bay will house two vehicles, one in the back and one in the front. The doors are fourteen feet tall for symmetry purposes because the travel trailer requires that height to get it in, and we didn't want to have another door that offset that balance, so we just made the other door the same height. But to answer your question as far as a barn goes, it's not being used as a barn. It's more of the character of the home. My understanding, historically, is that property was a farm in the past, and it's just a term, barn.
Follow-up?
The current garage you have, are you using that for vehicles, or what are you using that for? There's vehicles in there, too?
Yeah. Yeah, my wife's vehicle's in that garage. My vehicle's in that garage. My son's vehicle is in the parking lot. My daughter's vehicle's in the parking lot, and I also have a pickup truck in the parking lot. So right now, we've got three vehicles sitting in the parking lot. My travel trailer is being housed in Hudson right now, and, you know, I'm paying several hundred dollars a month to house that in Hudson. I'd like to have that on property. It does have a roof leak, and I've got to, if I want to keep the trailer, I've got to have it covered. Otherwise, it's going to ruin the interior of the trailer.
So what is the height of the building?
I'm not a builder, an architect, or anything. I submitted the plans to the zoning department. All I know is that they meet all the criteria, and it's, nothing exceeds allowable height. I don't know exactly what the height of the garage is. I'd have to refer back to the zoning department because they've been given the plans on that.
Yeah, we do have the plans. Also, you noted in your application that you intend to screen the building with fencing, landscaping, presumably. Given the height of the building, how would you accomplish screening the building?
I don't recall mentioning anything about screening the building with fencing. Our intent is to build the structure and then do landscaping in front of it afterward to, you know, as far as bushes go and stuff. I don't recall any reference to any fencing between Manchester Street and the garage.
I do recall seeing that, but perhaps...
Yes, it does say screened by fencing and tall vegetation in your application.
Perhaps I was referring to, there is a fence currently on, coming across the north side of the property in front of the large oak tree. Perhaps I was referring to that. I have no intent to put a fence between Manchester Street and the garage. This garage is proposed to be located in the northern corner of the lot, adjacent to Manchester Street. But no, there's no intent to put a fence there to block the garage.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Leno?
Yeah, the, the thing that gives me pause is the size of the garage and its placement just within the front yard setback. And to me, that is not in character with the neighborhood, so that's probably going to be my sticking point. You know, if it was farther back on the property, you know, maybe it would be a thing. It is a big, big building, much larger than any garage I know of in that neighborhood. And being essentially, you know, visibly right on the street, although I understand it's twenty feet from the property line, twenty-one feet from the property line according to your drawings, which gets out of having to have a variance for driveway width. I did notice that. It's still going to be visually intrusive to that entire neighborhood.
Any other questions from the board? Unless you have something to add, you're free to take a seat.
No, thanks.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward, and just, as I've said before, state your name and address.
I'm Brian Way, Eighty Ferry Road, Jeff's neighbor. Don't know if this is usual or not. Never been invited to one of these before, but got some certified mail the other day. Just want to say I don't have an issue with him having a garage. Since I've moved into that house, maybe five or six years ago, it was like the haunted house next door. You know, Luke was the previous owner. They've completely redone that place. It looks great, and I don't see an issue with the garage. That's really all I want to say.
Very good. Thank you.
Since you live, sir, since you live on Ferry Road, this addition would not really be visible to you.
It's on the other side, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor?
My name's Jim Gagnon. I live at Seventy-Five Ferry Road. I do not see a problem with putting a garage on the property. As the other gentleman just said, that it was kind of haunted-looking, and it's been refurbished. It looks beautiful. The landscaping's been done. I don't see a problem putting a garage to house your possessions. Matter of fact, I mean, it's going to generate more revenue for the city. I don't have a problem with it. You know, I do have, you know, a neighbor that has gone through all the neighborhood and talked to neighbors to oppose this, and this gentleman gets involved with everything when it has nothing to do with any of us on our road. I have no problem with seeing it there. The place looks immaculate, and I, you know, I don't see a problem being able to house your belongings. That's my opinion, and like I said, it's, you know, to turn around and generate more revenue as well for the property. I mean, this gentleman just probably paid nine hundred thousand dollars for this. I don't see a problem with him wanting to turn around and take care of his possessions.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? I do note, we also have a communication that came to us via email to whom it may concern. I, Ronald McGraw, of Two Twenty-four Manchester Street, have no objections to the variance being requested by the Pope family. Thank you, Ronald McGraw.
McGraw.
McGraw, sorry. Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the Sir, come forward. We'll get you next. Come, you can come forward. Come, you can come forward. You're already standing.
Jamie Bodwell, seventy-six Ferry Road. And we're in opposition. Did you guys get my letter that I had sent? Yep, perfect.
Yes.
The applicant claims that there is no adverse visual impact that exceeds it, and it's modest. We know it's not modest. It says, in reality, the structure would be forty feet long across the front of, of the property, twenty-nine feet tall at the peak, and with oversized fourteen-foot garage doors. And, and really, it's a barn. We all, we all saw that. The variance request also fails to disclose the proposed structure as twenty-nine feet in height according to the submittal plans exceeding the maximum allowable height under the National Land Use Code one ninety dash thirty-one by nine feet. It is placed in the front yard directly visible from the busy roadway and across from Penn and Chuck Mills. By National ordinance, fencing cannot exceed seven feet, making it impossible to screen or obscure the building from public view as suggested in the proposal. While technically within setbacks, its scale, height, and placement make it highly intrusive, contrary to the ordinance, ordinance's purpose of preserving neighborhood character. In addition to the structure itself, the proposal requires a large paver driveway extension across the front yard, eliminating green space and replacing it with hardscape. This significantly increases the visual impact of the project, makes the accessory use even more prominent, and fundamentally alters the residential streetscape along the busy roadway. The proposal alters the essential character of the neighborhood and injures the public rights by changing the visual landscape of the residential street. In regards to spirit of the ordinance, as stated in the applicant's proposal, the spirit of the ordinance is to ensure accessory buildings remain modest and subordinate to the principal residence. The applicant reframes this in terms of percent of lot area, but the ordinance specifically caps accessory structure size relative to primary structures, not percentage of lot coverage. A twelve-hundred-square-foot barn, a term used in the submittal plans, with twenty-nine-foot high and fourteen-foot wide doors, is not subordinate. It rivals or exceeds the size of many homes in Nashville, including, including several within the neighborhood. For example, one of the lots that directly butts, I believe it's lot one, one thirty-two, has primary structure that's eighteen by thirty-two. Far from preserving the aesthetics, the garage would dominate the property's street frontage. In spirit of, in the spirit of the ordinance, also to maintain balance between buildings and landscaping and open space. Expanding the driveway with, with a wide paver extension to accommodate the barn-sized garage at, at the very front of the lot means that the front yard becomes dominated by a hardscape and accessory use undermining that intended balance. The spirit of the ordinance is not met. It violates both the square footage and height limitations. In fact, this precisely is the type of oversized accessory building the ordinance had, that was designed to, to prevent. Substantial justice. The applicant states denial would be arbitrary and benefits outweigh public burdens. The property already has a two-car garage, a storage shed, a six-hundred-and-fifty-foot square attached ADU apartment, and a driveway capable of holding seven, seven-plus vehicles. Denial does not deprive the owner of reasonable use. It merely enforces the same rules every other property in the district must follow. The burden to the public is significant. The oversized, front-facing structure would disrupt the neighborhood's visual character. More concerningly, it would also set precedent for, for further out of the scale, further out-of-scale development. Substantial justice requires balance, balancing private benefit against public impact. Here, the personal convenience of additional oversized storage does not outweigh the broader harm to the neighborhood character and zoning integrity. Property values? The applicant claims values will not be, will be diminished, will not be diminished, and the structure will be, will be screened. No evidence, such as an appraiser's opinion, has been provided to support this claim. Screening is impossible. A twenty-nine-foot-tall building cannot be hidden behind fencing cap at seven feet per National ordinance, or, or even tall vegetation. This structure prominently located in the front yard would, would be immediately visible from the roadway neighboring properties in Penn and Chuck Mills. The additional paver extension covering much of the front yard diminishes curb appeal by replacing lawn landscaping and wide spans of stone.
Sir, if I, if I may, you're almost out of time. You might want to just wrap up.
Yep, yep. I'll, I'll stop here, and I'll just say that there's the four butters that signed and other direct butters assigned, including myself, and there was a couple other people on Dunlop as well. And I guess I'll stop right there. I don't want to run a timeout, so.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from the board? If not, you're free to take a seat. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Dave Cassin. I live at seventy-seven Ferry Road. I'm conflicted with this whole proposition because as a resident of the Ferry Road for, I don't know, fourteen years, thirteen years, you know, I'm a firm believer in the government should keep its, keep its business to itself, should stay out of people's lives. And you shouldn't tell people, you know, within reason, what to do with their property, right? That's why it's your property. However, I think that this kind of a, this is, I don't know. And, and do I really give a crap whether this guy builds it? Not really, probably. But I do have an issue with, you know, the, the tone and the disingenuous, like, oh, it's modest, and there's no, there's no, the benefits outweigh. Well, sure, the benefits outweigh for you when you put in this thing. And let's be, let's, let's cut to it, guys. This is a house they're putting on, okay? You can call it a barn, you can call it a shed or a garage. It's a house, all right? And there's already four houses on there. So, you know, at what point does it start to look like the Kennedy compound or the Bush compound up in Kenny, Baltimore, right? Not to mention, there's a school right across the street. Driving to work every day can be a bit of a nightmare with the traffic lights that they need to work on redoing. So, you know, this guy's car is going to get wet, you know, in the winter. All right, well, welcome to New England, right? You got acid rain, your cars might get a little dirty. So, but again, I'm conflicted. I don't want to begrudge somebody. It's, you know, it's their property. But I think it can, I think this is kind of overdoing it a little bit, right? I mean, maybe, maybe, I don't know. Can you put a smaller one in there? Probably not. He probably couldn't fit that big, huge recreational ride in there. Now, I don't know this new neighbor, so that's why I can be a little, I can be, I can be a little demonstrative against the proposition. Even though, again, if I were to have a beer with him, I'd say like, yeah, it's kind of your right to do these things, but maybe you should have found a different house that could house, you know, seven cars in a huge RV. I don't know. That, and maybe he didn't have that option. But, so, property values, whatever, you know, they're, they're all nice houses in that area. I don't think that's going to be really too impacted, so. And undue hardship, all that other stuff, that's just, you know, that's subjective, that's all subjective stuff. But it just, I don't know. I'm conflicted about it. So, I did not sign that thing, but again, you know, I think coming in, it's, it's coming in kind of hot into the neighborhood, and it's right, you know, again, it's right across the street from the school, and I have concerns about it, I guess. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Very good. Questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Sir?
Hello, so I'm Miranda Perez from seventy-eight Ferry Road. Our property's touched from the back slightly. And my concern mostly with it is the size. You know, it's bigger than most of the homes in the neighborhood, in the area. Not opposed if they want to build a garage or something around, along those lines, but a barn in the size of the house is my concern. This thing would be bigger than my home, and that's my opposition to it. That's just my concern. If other people want to start building stuff like that, it would probably look out of place. Again, I believe people should do what they want with their property, to an extent, and to me, this just seems overboard to me. That's the only thing I wanted to add. Thank you.
Very good. Questions? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, can we, what else? Could I ask, could I ask a few questions of staff, clarification?
Yeah. I was going to ask for clarification on the height, but I was waiting till...
It's the same thing, okay.
Very good. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns? Ma'am?
I apologize for my voice. I have my allergies are bad. I just wanted to speak, my name is Sherri Bodwell. It's from seventy-six Ferry Road. I just wanted to speak to the hardship portion of, of the variance. They argued that the lot is larger and that has a unique driveway layout. We don't believe that a large lot is a hardship. If anything, it should allow more conformity to the area because there is more space for them to do things. Not having another accessory unit is not a special condition or a hardship. They've already got a garage. They've got plenty of places to park their cars. I understand wanting to have it covered, but I, I don't consider that, I don't consider that to be a hardship, that you don't have room to cover all of your cars. And I don't, they said that the chosen place, placement of the barn or the garage is the least intrusive, which, which, it's actually the most intrusive to have it right in the front yard, right in the front property where everybody will see it as they drive by. As far as reasonableness, a barn totaling twelve-hundred square feet, as other people have mentioned, is, is just excessive for the area. It's larger than a lot of the homes in the area, and it's just not modest. It's, it's, it looked beautiful on, you know, in the drawing, and I'm sure in any other setting it would be great, but in that particular location, I just don't think it's, you know, it's reasonable for the neighborhood. And, and there are no others in the neighborhood that I know of that are, that are that large. We have very few detarched garage, garages in the area, but that, nothing to that extent. And so we just, we feel that the variance fails multiple, you know, multiple criteria because of its size and its height for the, you know, for the most part. And again, it's, it's no hard feelings. We don't even know the people, and it's just, it's just not personal. It's just more, just to kind of keep the neighborhood as it is.
Very good. Questions? Seeing none, you're free to take a seat. I, I do want to note that the letter that was submitted by Jamie and Sherri Bodwell was signed by four others in the area, and I apologize. My copy, it's, it's hard for me to read all of the names, but they are the residents at nine Dunlop, seven Dunlop, seventy-eight Ferry, fourteen Dunlop, twelve Dunlop. So, and we do have, even though I know I cut you off, we have your full letter in, in the record. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I, I do invite the applicant back up if you want to rebut any of the comments that were made.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I, I do somewhat take issue to the fact that it was represented that I have, this would be the fourth dwelling on the property. That's not the case at all. I don't know if anyone drove past the property. We have one dwelling and one accessory dwelling. This is not a house that I'm building. It's a garage to house my assets, my vehicles, and protect them from the elements. I, I'll go through each one, you know, of the variance criteria. As far as not contrary to public interest, the proposed garage will comply with zoning height limits and building codes. While visible from the street...
If I may just interrupt you for one second on that point, because that, that question did come up, and I was remiss in not asking Mr. Falk to address it. But, Mr. Falk, would you mind addressing how the city measures height?
Is this taking away from my time?
No, it's not. It's not the clock.
Sure. Building heights are measured at the mean between the ridge and the eve. So it's not the overall peak. We don't measure the building at the peak. Maybe the peak is twenty-nine feet, but we measure it much further down between the eve and the ridge. And we have drawings that state that it's like nineteen feet, nineteen and a half feet, so it should meet the twenty-feet height limit.
Thank you. I'm sorry for that, Mr. Boucher. We'll start the clock again. You can go.
Yeah. While visible from the street, visibility does not constitute public harm. The garage will be constructed with residential-style materials and architectural features to blend with the home and the neighborhood. The project will not obstruct traffic views or alter the essential character of the area. In fact, it will add to the privacy of our lot in the back. Spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is to maintain neighborhood scale and prevent overdevelopment. My property can accommodate this garage without crowding or adverse impact. The building is proportionate to the lot's size and intended for normal residential use. By providing enclosed storage, the, the project supports the ordinance's intent of promoting orderly and compatible development. Number three, substantial justice. Substantial justice is achieved when, when the benefit to the property owner outweighs any perceived harm to the public. Denial would prevent me from making reasonable use of my property while approval has no adverse impact on neighbors or the public. The garage will allow secure storage of vehicles and equipment, thereby reducing outdoor storage and enhancing the property's appearance. No diminution of property values. There's no credible evidence that a property-built, well-maintained garage diminishes property values. On the contrary, enclosed storage and improved curb appeal generally support or enhance neighborhood values. The design will not resemble a barn, but will complement residential character with appropriate siding, roof pitch, and landscaping. It will look exactly as the existing dwelling. Hardship. The property's frontage on Man Street, or I'm sorry, on Manchester Street and existing site layout limit alternative placement for a functional garage. Strict enforcement of the ordinance would prevent a reasonable accessory use commonly found in residential neighborhoods. This garage represents a fair and reasonable use consistent with surrounding properties. And I've got a copy of my rebuttal for each member of the...
I did notice, you were supposed to be responding to the, to the objections and didn't do that.
Yeah, all the objections, I responded to each objection which was based on the variance criteria. Every one of them was based on variance criteria. They all listed how my garage doesn't meet the variance criteria, and I just went through and indicated why it does meet the variance criteria.
And you are free to submit those to us, and it'll become part of the record. Questions from, I, I'm sorry, are you, are you done? Questions from the board?
I'll have questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Sir? Your, your, your application is based on accessory, the, obviously, the percentage of accessory use area exceeds. The, the accessory, you have, you have a pool, pool deck, and a shed. Are those all staying in place?
The pool is going to accommodate...
Just speaking on the mic, just so they can hear you.
The pool is, is being removed to accommodate the, the garage. The shed is staying. My understanding is with removing the pool, we are over the allowable accessory use space by just a little bit under two hundred square feet, I believe. Two hundred and twenty square feet according to your application. Okay. Sorry about that.
So if it wasn't for the shed, you wouldn't be here?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Now, you're free to take a seat.
Thank you.
So now, we would allow one person representing those who spoke in opposition or with questions or concerns, if you wish, to come forward, and you would have five minutes to give the board your last words. So, and that's, that's... So, and that's, that's optional. If you wish to and you want to speak amongst yourselves and see if one of you would like to come forward, you may. You, you don't have to. It's, it's really up to you. Very good. Uh, so, so with that, we're gonna close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board.
Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So, uh, so this, this is a tough one. We, we don't like to see cases where the neighbors are all pitted against each other. Makes, makes our, uh, makes what we have to do very difficult. I, I am pretty sure that all the members of this board have probably driven by this property. This is a very large property, has a very unique shape, which obviously you wouldn't see until you drive by. When you look at it on paper, it, it has a very unique shape, a beautiful landscaping. So, so I was surprised to see that they wanted to kill a bunch of this landscaping and put in this garage. This is, this is a large, a large building. Twelve hundred square feet is, is going to, as, as someone talked to earlier, is bigger than some of the houses in this neighborhood. What, what really started my concerns when I did the drive-by, besides, you know, the, the twelve hundred square feet, is the location of the building. In my mind, we'd be, we'd be having a different discussion if it was kind of tucked around to the side, away from the street. And I think that's what some of the neighbors have concerns with as well, is that it's, it's up front, up center. Everybody's gonna see it. There's no block in it. It's, it's a large building. I, I'm not gonna support this. I think if they made it smaller, once again, as Mr. Boucher was, was alluding to, we wouldn't be here. You know, you get rid of that two hundred and twenty square feet, makes it a smaller building. It's just a monster when you, you look at the size, not just the twelve hundred square feet, but, but the height of it. I actually did a little science experiment. I, I decided to measure my second-floor window on my, on my lot, which is a flat lot, and it's fourteen and a half feet just from, from the second-floor window down. So, so basically double it, how big this thing is gonna be. It is right up against the lot line. And they're not doing anything wrong. They can do that, the, the setback line. But this thing is gonna be front and center. It's gonna look like two full-size buildings on this, on this lot. Between the, the house, which, which has the attached garage and ADU, and then this, it's, it's going to look like two separate and distinct houses. I, I would recommend to the applicant that he figure out a way to get rid of those two hundred and twenty square feet. We wouldn't be here. And he can build what he needs to build, but I cannot support this as is.
Other thoughts? Mr. Leno.
I, I also do not support this application as is. Again, as I commented earlier, the placement of it is, for such a large structure, is not in character with the neighborhood, is, is rather disruptive, I believe, to the character of the neighborhood. And I also question the, the, you know, I understand the desire, but the, the need to completely shelter a thirty-five-foot travel trailer. Most people don't park their travel trailers, their RVs, you know, undercover and, you know, maybe fix the roof leak. I would recommend, as Mr. Neely was saying, that the applicant look for a way to downsize this, this structure. There already is a, a garage on the property, so adding another garage. Yes, it's a very, it's a very nice property and the, the building by itself, if you just look at it in isolation, might look fine, but it, it's gonna sort of look like a mini warehouse right on the, the, right on Manchester Street. And just be so visually intrusive. So I, I cannot support this.
Any other thoughts?
I, I think I'd agree. I, I can't find support either. And I think for the same reasons that, that were mentioned. I, I think it, it is out of character with the neighborhood, significantly so. So I, I do think it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And it would, to the purpose of the ordinance, uh, it, both given its size and its placement, I think it tends to overwhelm the property. It wouldn't appear to me to be subordinate in any way. And again, that's both the position and the size, being right up against the street the way it is. So for those reasons, I, I really can't find support. And I think it would. And, you know, I think has also been noted, um, there really aren't other structures like this in the area. Detached garages aren't common and those that do exist tend to be more conventional in size. This is really a very large garage structure. And that's, that's really, I wouldn't consider that reasonable within the context of the neighborhood.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Graham, I was gonna add, I, I share your view of Mr. Neely's views and Mr. Wyman's views.
I can take a stab at it if anybody wants. All right, I, I am going to go back, make sure I have it in front of me. I'm gonna make a motion that the application of the Pope Family Trust, Jeffrey and Laura Pope, trustees, two eighteen Manchester Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-seven percent requested, to construct a thirty-by-forty detached garage be denied. We find that granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest because it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood due to the size of the structure and its, its placement on the lot. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed because for the reasons mentioned, the character of the neighborhood would be altered. But, but also because the, the spirit of the ordinance is that accessory structures be subordinate to the principal structures on the property. And again, given the size and the placement of this property, uh, uh, of this proposed structure, it would not be subordinate. They would have a tendency to, to dominate the property. Granting the variance would not do substantial justice because although there would be a, a benefit to the owner, potentially a significant one, in being able to put all the family's vehicles and equipment undercover, the visual impact to the neighborhood, the impact of the, you know, directly to the surrounding neighborhood and to Manchester Street would be significant. We have no evidence that the value of surrounding properties would or would not be diminished. And we don't find the denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. The property is really distinct, given its size and its shape from other surrounding properties. But we find that the proposed use, again, given its size and the fact that it is out of character with typical accessory structures, detached accessory structures in the surrounding neighborhood, I, uh, wouldn't make it, means that it, it's not a reasonable use. So for those reasons, I move the motion that the application be denied.
Seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion? All those of, in favor of the motion to deny? Opposed? Opposed by Mr. Boucher. So the motion to deny passes four-zero. As I've noted-
Four-one.
Uh, I'm sorry, four-one. As, as I have noted earlier, there is a thirty-day window of appeal. So you are free to appeal that decision if, if that is your wish. So, uh, thank you. And again, any questions, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Falk.
That statement, did you read that statement that you were, you were just saying, did you read it?
It goes into the minutes.
I'm sorry.
It'll be, it'll be in the minutes, but I, I didn't read it.
It sounded like you read it, like, you were determined to say that.
No, no, it wasn't.
We have the form for either way.
So folks, we're going on to, we have one more application before us this evening. So if you don't mind, uh, any conversations out in the hall. So, so I'm reading the next case into the record.
So, um, the next case is the application of Donna Mayo and Dwayne Morton of Thirty-Six Waters Edge Drive, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table sixteen dash three, to encroach an additional three feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback for a total encroachment of eleven feet, to convert a twelve-by-sixteen deck into a three-season porch and extend the deck an additional three feet. This is in the R-eighteen zone. Note that it's a cluster, uh, in Ward Two. And I'm assuming you are the applicant.
I am. I'm, I'm Dwayne Morton, Thirty-Six Waters Edge Drive.
So just, uh, feel free to, you know, describe what it is you want to do and the reasons you want to do it. And if the noise is bothering you, we can close the door.
No, it's all right. That's a tough act to follow.
I know.
Basically, this is the second variance we've asked for. The other one was about twenty years ago, I think?
Twenty-five years ago. Two thousand and six, I think.
The deck was originally eight feet. There was an addition on the house. The deck was eight feet deep. And that was thirty, to the thirty-foot setback. Eight-foot deck wide is pretty useless. You can't really sit at it. You know, put a forty-inch table there with chairs. You're into the screens and everything else like that. So the variance for the additional eight feet was granted. So now we have a nice deck. Unfortunately, there are a couple hundred acres of woods behind us, I believe. Penchak Creek is in the woods behind us. Lots of mosquitoes, lots of bugs. So I can't sit out there in the, in the evenings at all. So we thought, well, why don't we just turn it into a, a screen room or a three-season room or something like that, right, just to cover a part of the deck? The problem with that is there's not enough room to grill anymore. There's only about a three-foot wide deck left, which is why we asked for the extra three feet. You know, just for safety. So that's, that's, I guess, pretty much it. I don't know. Like I said, there's no butters behind us. There is no, um, I didn't know you guys did drive-bys. If you've seen the house from the street, it's on the left side, 'cause that was where the addition was, on the left, back-left corner. The kitchen was added on to one ninety-nine. The neighbors on that side, I believe, sent a letter, because I have a copy on it, an email, that they have no objections. And they're actually on the neighborhood board as well as a board in our neighborhood. So, uh, the thirty-foot setback, I, to be honest with you, I guess it's really for, what, for keeping open areas, right, when the neighborhood is developed. There is oodles of open area in those woods behind us. I mean, it's common land, right, behind us that's owned by, I guess, the Neighborhood Association, right? And then behind that is all conservation land. My backyard, if you go out my backyard, I'm at the intersection of basically Amber Street and Continental Boulevard. All that woods is my backyard. So, um, so it won't, it won't, uh, it won't ruin anybody's view of anything. There's no, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't hinder any, any public access. There is public access. Uh, there's a couple of paths that do run between some of the properties into those woods so people can, you know, walk the paths and things like that, walk their dogs back there. I don't know what else to say at this point.
That, I think that's enough. Uh, questions from the board? Seeing none, unless there's something you'd like to add, feel free to take a seat.
Thank you.
I think pretty clearly there is no one here to speak in favor or opposition. We do have one communication that did come in from Harold Scardall, or Scardall. To whom it may concern, my name is Harold Scardall, resident of Thirty-Four Waters Edge Drive in Ashwa, neighborhood of Thirty-Six Waters Edge Drive, Nashua. I am also one of the trustees of the Lakewood Park Trust, managing the trust for this neighborhood. I have no issues with the variance that Mr. and Mrs., uh, that Mrs. Mayo and Mr. Morton has requested. If there are any questions, contact me. And here is my number and email address.
So with that, I will close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So I am in favor of this application. I will, I will tell you that I just went through this process myself and added in a screened-in porch, and it's a lifestyle changer. So, so I'm very much in favor of what you're trying to do. I understand the mosquito issue. When we did the drive-by, everybody can see that there's just woods behind this, this deck. Nobody's even gonna know he's adding on to this deck. When you take a look at the map of the neighborhood, everybody has a deck. Really, this is kind of a no-brainer for, for, for why we should move forward with this.
Mr. Leno.
I agree with Mr. Neely. This is a very reasonable thing. I have no questions.
Any other thoughts?
I, I would agree also. And, and, you know, it's challenging to do too much behind the house just given the setback and the fact that you have this vast area of conservation land and common land. Obviously, the purposes of the setback requirements are, are more than met.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Leno.
I'm out of practice. I want to make a motion to approve the variance requested by Donna Mayo and Dwayne Morton, owners of Thirty-Six Waters Edge Drive, Chief H-Lot 201. They are, they are requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table sixteen-three, to encroach an additional three feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback for a total encroachment of eleven feet, to convert a twelve-foot-by-sixteen-foot deck into a three-season porch, and in the process extending the deck an additional three feet. This is in the R-eighteen cluster zone, Ward Two. The board finds that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it will essentially be invisible to, to the rest of the neighborhood. Many of the neighbors already have decks. There would be, and there's no, no prop, no owners behind the property, so that shouldn't be a problem. We believe the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the initial encroachment would not cause any, any harm, any interference to neighboring properties. Granting the variance would do substantial justice to the owner, allowing them to enjoy their deck in the buggy season, and that I can absolutely sympathize with. We have no evidence that the values of surrounding properties would be diminished. I, I would expect there would be no effect whatsoever. And there would be an unnecessary hardship should we deny this variance because they would be unable to enjoy their property in the manner that they would like. So I would like to make a motion again to approve this area variance.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Potry. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? And your application passes your names. As we noted, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but I, I think you're probably safe.
The mosquitoes might complain.
I guess it's been so hot that it's dry. It's not as bad as it has been, but I'm looking at the yard. I just retired. I'm getting eaten.
Good luck here.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so moving on, did everybody have a chance to review the agenda for the next meeting for Regional Impact?
Yes.
Did anybody see any regional impact?
No. I see none.
I did not either. All right, no regional impact. So moving on to the minutes, if we've had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting, are there any comments? Mr. Potry.
Uh, page four, um, the last paragraph that starts with Mr. Mankara stated, I think something's missing from this paragraph, 'cause I think what, I think what you were saying, Mr. Mankar, was that denying the ordinance would cause this unnecessary hardship.
Yes. I, I have this flagged too, and I'm, I'm, if I may, I'm, I'm not sure if I can read all my writing now the way I scribbled on this, but in the first line where it says, "Mr. Mankar stated an unnecessary hardship," I would strike "shall be deemed to" and replace it with "would," so that it would read, "Mr. Mankar stated that an unnecessary hardship would exist." And then I would cross out "if" and "only if," so that it would read, "an unnecessary hardship would exist owing to special conditions of the property," if that makes sense. And then, um, this is minor, but in the third line, after-
A and and.
Where, where are we? Oh, yes, A, A and and, yes. And also after the word "area," where it says "properties in the area," comma, and I would say, noting that it is an unusually large lot. And then going down to one, two, three, four, five, six lines, seven, or fourth up from the bottom of the paragraph, between, where it says "same as existing," comma, I would insert "therefore." Therefore, there is no fair and substantial relationship. And then, again, I'm being picky here, but in the second to last line where it says, I'll start at, at the third from the bottom, where it says, "no fair and substantial relationship between the lot size and the lot depth," comma, or before comma, "requirements and their application to the property." Does that make sense?
I think so. I think so.
Okay. So those were my comments here for that paragraph. And then, if you wouldn't mind, just going up, I mean, this is incredibly minor, but in the paragraph that starts with a bold motion, third line up from the bottom, it says, "and density on this size," I just insert the word, I would replace "size" and just say, "on this lot." So the density on this lot is consistent. I'm sorry, that was, those were my, so I didn't want to interrupt your flow on page four.
No, but that was, I wasn't exactly sure how to change the paragraph, so I think that works. That's perfect, I think.
Anymore?
I had one other change on page 11. The last full paragraph, as Patry said, that as far as traffic and parking, I would cross out that and put "there." There may be code enforcement issues to address.
And I had, again, this is pretty minor, but on page one, where it's, what, second full paragraph, it says, "Mr. Mankara announced that case number one, and the second line has been postponed to a date certain." I would just put in a semicolon, "the" meeting for September 9th, or the meeting of September 9th. And then, on page 15, in the paragraph that begins, Attorney Patricia Pansioko, blah, 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 so line 1, 2, 3, 4, it says, I'll start above, "to renovate and restore a home that was on fire." I would just say that was destroyed by fire. And then, very minor, but going down two lines, you know, she said that the owner plans to replace the former Randstraw home, comma, built in the 1960s, built in the 1960s. I just put a period there and then capitalized the I and T, "it had." It just kind of went on and on and on.
I would remove that apostrophe, by the way, in 1960s.
You're right. You're right, there's no apostrophe there. That's a good point. It's not possessive. All right, that's what I, that's all I've got.
I move, will you approve those with those edits? Approve the minutes with those edits?
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Seconded by Mr. Laino. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. And is there any other business to come before us this evening? I do not think so.
No.
No, motion to adjourn.
Yes, motion to three.
Yes.
I think that's unanimous.
Well, the garage was a fun one.
The garage was a fun one.